Well, good evening everybody. My name is Sean Clancy. For those of you that don't know me, your friendly neighborhood town moderator. It's my honor and pleasure to welcome you all to Carver's annual town meeting and my second such opportunity to lead these honored proceedings. Please note that portable listening devices are available at request. Please simply raise your hand and we'll get you one. Also, we have portable microphones for those who are unable to approach the microphones in the aisles for debate or questions. Simply raise your hand during debate and someone will approach you with a microphone. All microphones will be sanitized between uses, including those ones in the aisles. Obviously, we're meeting tonight under the most unusual of circumstances. Normally, we would have had this meeting in late April, yet the COVID-19 crisis has dealt a serious blow to all of us, making life more challenging in almost every single way. So, here we are in late June with the goal of getting the most important business items addressed before the end of the fiscal year. Please take time to recognize the fact that everyone in town hall, in every town department and committee, has worked very hard in the past year, and even harder in the past months, to keep town business running and to prepare for this meeting and all of the other town business. With that said, the circumstances are at best unusual and at worst crippling to individuals, departments, and committees, as we all try to take care of our businesses, our families, our neighbors, our friends, and ourselves. So, please bear with us tonight if things are not quite perfect. Due to the crisis at hand, we kindly ask you to sit and remain at least six feet from all people who are not a member of your household. We also ask kindly that you wear a mask when at least six feet of social distancing is not possible to protect yourselves and others. Also, please pay attention to any markings on the floors. All registered voters who are residents of the town Carver are asked to sit in the front areas where all of you guys are already. If there is anybody, or if there were to be anybody in the room who is not a resident of the town, we just ask them to sit in the upper deck in the back. Let's see. We did have an overflow room, and we did not have to use that tonight, so that is good. So, we have everybody nice and cozy together in here. Tonight's proceedings are being recorded by Area 58 Cable Television and taking place here at the Carver Middle High School Auditorium at 60 South Meadow Road in Carver, Massachusetts. A special thanks goes out to Michael Shaw, Rich Goulart, and the team at Area 51, Dave Seidentop and his team as well, too. They did nothing short of a miracle to pull all this together with the audiovisual setting up the overflow room in case we needed it. And really, they pulled off quite a miracle here on such short notice, you know, given the circumstances of the crisis as well. Out of respect and courtesy to our proceedings, please silence or set your cellphones to vibrate. At this point, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Town Clerk Kara Dayhill has advised me that we have a quorum of at least 75 qualified voters, and I therefore declare that a quorum being present, this annual town meeting will be called to order at 7:04 PM on Monday, June 29, 2020. With that said, we don't have the typical amount of pomp and circumstance at town meetings. We're trying to keep things fairly simple and straightforward, so that we impact as few individuals as possible, and also so that we get you guys all home in a reasonable time. So, with that said, we're going to go ahead with the Pledge of Allegiance. And all who are able, please stand as we say the Pledge of Allegiance. Then, please remain standing as we observe a moment of silence for all the public servants we've lost in the past year, as well as those in town who have lost their lives in the COVID-19 crisis. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. You may be now be seated. So, as I mentioned, we don't have a ton of formalities, but we do have some that we just would be remiss if we didn't cover, which does not include me dropping my paperwork. So, invariably, from year to year, there are several individuals within our town that retire after a distinct and long career. And I wanted to take a moment to recognize this exemplary service and the loyalty that some folks retiring from town service this year have shown. Please note that this is something new, that I've been trying to get off the ground for the last couple of years, and I can only recognize those that I actually know about. If you or someone you know has retired or will be retiring after 10 or more years of service to the town, please get in touch with me, so I can recognize them at a future meeting. I am most certainly missing people, and I do not intend to do that. So, I want to start by thanking anyone who has served our great town, whether past, present, or future. You are the people that make this a great place to live by being generous with your time, exhibiting unlimited patience, and having pride for your town. From the schools, I have Diane O'Brien, custodian, who's retiring after 14 years of service. Mary Ann Sherwood, also a custodian, who's retiring after 17 years of service. Pamela Reed, an educational support professional, who is retiring after 17-plus years of service. Kathleen Farr, Director of Food Services, who is retiring after 30-plus years of service. And thank you to all of those folks for your service to our schools and our children. In other town departments, I have Lynn Kalbeck, who was Assistant Town Accountant, retiring after 13 years of service. Jeff LaBarnes, custodian, who's retiring after 30 years of service. Rick Leaparty, an on-call firefighter, who's retiring after 32 years of service. And last, but certainly not least, we want to offer a special thanks to Mr. Tom Walsh, EMS Chief Director of Emergency Management and former member of the Carver Fire Department, who has retired as EMS Chief. I've asked how long Tom has served our town, and everyone I spoke with scratched their head and said, "A long time." I think they were trying to be kind and didn't want to date him. But let's just be clear, he's been here long enough to leave an indelible mark on our community and a legacy of professionalism and pride that will be carried forward by all who follow. I have a proclamation from State Representative Gifford that I'd like to read. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the House of Representatives, be it hereby known to all, that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Chief Thomas Walsh in recognition of your dedicated service to the public safety of the town of Carver for 29 years as EMS Chief and 17 years as Emergency Management Director. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors, given this 29th day of June 2020 at the State House, Boston, Massachusetts, signed by Robert A. DeLeo, Speaker of the House, and offered by State Representative Susan Williams Gifford. So, Mr. Walsh, thank you so much for your dedication, and we have your proclamation here if you'd like to collect it or collect it at the end. Excellent. So, now I'd like to introduce you guys to the boards and committees, all before you, who work tirelessly to support you on a day-to-day basis and are here tonight to help with our proceedings. First, I'd like to introduce Mr. Scott Neef, Superintendent of Carver Public Schools. Right down the front. I'm not used to having people in front of me and sides or whatever, so bear with me a little bit here. Along with him is Mr. Andy Carterelli, School Committee Chair. And Mr. Carterelli, if you wouldn't mind, would you like to introduce the other members of your committee?
Sure. We have Stephanie Clority to my left, Vice Chairman. James O'Brien, member down there. Jason Greenwood. Jen Pratt. And we have Brad Brothers, our Chief Financial and Operations Officer.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Carterelli. And up next is the Board of Selectmen. We have Ms. Sarah Hewens, who is the Chair of our Select Board. And Ms. Hughes, would you please introduce the other members of the Select Board?
Yes, thank you. We have Bob Elbin, our Vice Chair. We have Jim Hoffman, one of our new members. And Bogart, another new member. And Mark Townsend.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Hewens. Then over here on my right, I have Mr. Richard LaFawn, who is our interim town administrator. Mr. Greg Corborel, who is our town council. Ms. Kara Dayhill, who is our town clerk. Ms. Meg Lemay, who is our finance director. Ms. Kathy Kay, our treasurer, tax collector. And I'm not sure if we have him up front here, but Mr. Jack Angley is our Chairman of the Capital Outlay Committee. Is he present?
Yes.
I don't know if you saw him. Back there. And Mr. Angley, I don't know if there's other members of your committee that we want to introduce, but... That's all right. And then, Mr. Alan Germain, Chairman of the Finance Committee. And Mr. Germain, would you like to introduce the other members of your committee?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. To my left is Catherine Banzel, our Vice Chair. Pat Kenealy, Kevin Sullivan, Adam Holmes, Beth Solger, and Maurice Wigman.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Germain. Great. So, just a brief introduction before we get started. I want to thank everyone for their support after last year's town meeting. It was a challenging first meeting, to say the least, but everyone handled themselves in a respectful and dignified way. And the outpouring of positive feedback after the meeting was truly humbling. Serving this town is truly an honor, and I'm inspired by others who, like me, have stepped up to answer the calls. We've seen several new people serving on committees and boards in both elected and appointed positions since last year. As I stated last year, if you feel compelled, as I did, to get involved, there are many ways to serve, including being appointed to one of our many openings that we have on town boards and committees. So, please contact the town clerk for a listing of openings if you are interested. With that said, I'd like to kindly ask you to use tonight's meeting as an opportunity to listen intently to the various proposals brought forth by boards and committees who have spent tireless hours preparing tonight's business for your consideration. Please be respectful to the points of views of our elected... Sorry, to the points of views of other folks in the room, including our elected officials, town employees, volunteer committee members, and of course, your neighbors seated in the room. I'm convinced that everyone in the room is concerned for this town's best interests and equally deserve your respect and patience. Keep in mind that this is town meeting and not a Facebook group. There are rules we follow, which are detailed in the bylaws, town meeting time, and Robert's Rules of Order, which help us steer this meeting in a civil manner. At no point will the many inappropriate behaviors exhibited on social media be tolerated in this room. While we may sometimes think we know precisely what the motives of another individual are, we should not draw conclusions based on hearsay or limited evidence. Keep in mind, this is not a court of law. Therefore, at no point should anyone attack the personal motives of someone else in the room, make disparaging remarks, or attempt to label another member of town meeting a liar or a fraud. To those who wish to do so, will risk of being abruptly cut off and asked to apologize or rephrase their statement, and otherwise yield the floor. For example, if you believe a statement made by someone else not to be factual, the proper etiquette is to say something along the lines of, "I believe there's a significant evidence that the member is mistaken." Of course, stating the supporting evidence may add to your credibility. Everyone in the room is capable of forming their own opinion based on the information presented. On the way in, each of you had an opportunity to grab a packet of information, which includes the warrant. There is an appendix in the back of the warrant with information pertaining to the articles on the warrant and some information about town meeting procedure. Also, you had an opportunity to grab a copy of the 2019 Annual Report. Just a brief explanation of what an article on the warrant is comprised of. If you turn to your warrant and just look at the first article, for instance, you will see that the warrant lists each article that we'll be voting on tonight. Underneath the name of each article is a description of what is being voted on, followed by an informational summary explaining the article and perhaps some of the motivations behind it. After the informational summary is a proposed motion, the motion will be presented on the screen. Please note that before any business can be discussed, a motion must be made and seconded. So, the proposed motion is there to help you get that ball rolling. Following the proposed motion is an indication of the vote count required for a motion to pass. Lastly, a listing is provided showing how the Board of Selectmen and any committees sponsoring the article voted in recommendation of the article. Of course, there are a few rules. I will introduce each article by reading its caption and ask for a motion and second before providing an opportunity for the sponsor or sponsors of the article to provide a brief presentation on the article. Don't worry, we don't have very many presentations tonight. If you are presenting, or you feel you may be answering questions on our article, I kindly ask that you please sit near the front. Only motions and amendments which are directly relative to the article at hand will be in order. Any motion or amendment which is fundamentally different from the open article may be deemed out of order at the moderator's discretion. As many of you know, we are required per town bylaw to publish the warrant seven days prior to town meeting for the purpose of allowing residents to decide whether they have an interest in debating and voting on the business laid forth. Limiting debate and actions to the business on the warrant is meant to protect the rights of those who may have chosen not to be here tonight based on the contents of the warrant. Once a motion has been made and seconded, and only after a motion has been made and seconded, we may begin presentations and then debate. Any voter is welcome to speak and debate. Simply approach one of the microphones in the aisles. There are three before you, one here, one in the middle, and one over there. Wait to be recognized by the moderator. State your name and address, and then make your statement. Due to the circumstances, I please ask only one person stand behind a microphone at any one time. Once that person is seated, another may approach. I will attempt to recognize people in the order they have approached the microphone. Each speaker will be afforded three minutes per microphone appearance and two opportunities to speak on each motion. I will not recognize someone for a second opportunity to speak in debate until everyone that wishes to speak a first time has had an opportunity to do so. Legitimate questions which are not statements posed as questions will be considered exceptions. The gizmo you see sitting in front of me is a timer, which we tried out last year for the first time, and I got a lot of great feedback on. Some not-so-great feedback as well, too, but we're going to stick with it. It will start with a green light, change to yellow when you have 30 seconds left, and red when time has run out. All debate is to be conducted through the moderator. You should not speak directly to or with other members of town meeting. Those town officials and committee members who are seated in front of you will observe the same rules as those seated in the audience when speaking in debate, including utilizing the microphones in the aisle if they are able. That may not be necessary tonight considering social distancing. Those seated at the table should also refrain from speaking or answering questions unless recognized. In the interest of time, when speaking in debate, please be sure to state points of view and information not previously provided or questions not previously asked. When the motion is put to vote, that will be your opportunity to show your support for or against the motion. Please refrain from applauding or booing. We never had that. If at any time you feel that I have made a procedural error, the proper course of action is to rise to a point of order. Simply rise and state "point of order." You should try not to interrupt someone while they are speaking in debate unless allowing them to continue would, in your estimation, cause a furthering of procedural error. Otherwise, respectfully wait for them to finish before making your point of order. I will then recognize you, allow you to state your point of order, and then rule on it. After debate has been exhausted, I will put the question to vote. Alternatively, any member of town meeting may make a motion to move the previous question, which, after being seconded and approved by a two-thirds vote, will end debate and put the question to vote. I will not recognize such a motion unless debate has become repetitive and no new information is being presented. Articles will be taken up in the order they are listed on the warrant unless a motion to advance an article or postpone an article has been made, seconded, and approved by a two-thirds vote. During the course of proceedings, we may have a few individuals who are not Carver voters who are required to make presentations on an article, including town employees who have a legal right by statute to speak at town meeting. Unless I hear any objections now, I will let these individuals speak. Hearing no objections, they will be allowed to speak. As become our custom in the past and in the interest of time, if there are no objections now, I will waive the reading of the warrant. Seeing no objections, we will not read the warrant. At least a portion of each article will be placed on the screen. Actually, it's just the motions that we're going to have up on the screen today. So, you'll have that there for your reference, but you'll also see the motions in the article of the warrant. So, if you want to make a motion, please read it as written in the warrant. If you need to make edits to it or anything like that, kindly let us know what those changes might be. If you'd like to make an amendment to a motion, we ask that you put that in writing and bring it up to the front, so that we can review that amendment, make sure with town council and the other folks up front that that amendment is legal and that it makes sense to everyone up here. And then, we'll give you an opportunity to make that motion and to speak on it as well, too. So, without further ado...
Mr. Moderator, we're having some technical difficulties putting this up on the screen. I don't know if Mr. Shaw has any insight here.
Bear with us one moment while we get the first article up. Remember that part about not being perfect.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. It's a standard article for the first one. I mean, it's already written down.
All right, thank you. All right. So, on Article One, Annual Town Report, this does require a majority vote when we get to that point. The recommendation by the Select Board was five to zero on this article. So, do I have a motion on Article One?
I move the town approve the 2019 Annual Report and abolish Medical Marijuana Center Bylaw Subcommittee and Shertlip Park Committee.
Excellent. I have a motion made and seconded. We'll now open Article One for debate. Seeing no motion to the mics, we'll move this to a vote. So, again, this requires a majority vote. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Article Two, Supplemental Appropriations for Fiscal 2020. This does also require a majority vote. Recommendation from the Select Board was five to zero. Finance Committee was 10 to zero. Do we have a motion on the article?
I move the town make the fiscal year 2020 budget transfers shown below from the Cranberry Village retained earnings to the Cranberry Village Enterprise Fund operating budget amounts $7,500.
Excellent. Motion has been made and seconded. So, we now open it for debate. Seeing no motion to the mics, we'll go ahead and put this to a vote. So, on Article Two, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Passes unanimously. Article Three, Allocation of Funds from Fiscal 2020 Free Cash. And just to give a little bit of an introduction here, the way we're going to handle this, and we did this last year as well, too, is that I am going to call out each of the items on the transfer list here. And if there's an item that you'd like to discuss or otherwise debate, then simply just shout out "hold" as loud as you can, and I will set that one aside, and we'll come back to it, and we'll go ahead and debate and discuss that one. And for those that nobody has held, then we will just go ahead and vote on those as a whole. So, on this item, it does require a majority vote. Recommendation by the Select Board was five-zero, and the Finance Committee was four to three. I'll go ahead and read each item now. And again, if you'd like to hold. Okay. All right. So, first, we'll actually go ahead and ask for a motion on the article to approve as written on the screen, and then we'll go ahead with the holds.
I move that the town approve Article Three and the amounts and the purposes set forth in the warrant article, and to take these individually. I've added that. Do you need that as a... Or is that a friendly amendment?
No, that's fine, because it's part of the motion. And to take them individually. Excellent. So, we've got a motion in second on Article Three. Okay, great. So, again, I'll go ahead and read out each item, and then just shout out "hold" if you'd like to debate that one.
Can I vote, Mr. Moderator? Can I ask a couple of questions before you get to generalized questions instead of individual? Or do you want to wait till the end?
So, is a general question about the whole article? Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Mr. Moderator, I have a question about the wording where it says, "included all incidental and related costs." Are the incidental and related costs included in the amounts that are set forth here in these, or is it over and above? That's question one. And question number two, is there a limit of how much those incidental costs and related costs are?
Thank you through you, Mr. Moderator, to Mr. Belbin. So, the incidental costs have to still be within the amount that is being appropriated. So, the ceiling, for example, for town school special education reserve is $100,000. It may include other items that are related to that, but it can never exceed the $100,000 unless they come back to this meeting and ask for additional funds.
Thank you for the clarification.
Excellent. Okay. Okay. So, I'm going to start reading the items, and then again, just shout "hold" if you'd like to debate one. So, A, Town School Special Education Reserve for Fiscal Year 21. B, Recreational Committee Support Funding for Programs and Activities Fiscal Year 21. C, Townwide Radio System Infrastructure Priority 1 and 2 Fiscal Year 20. D, Emergency Radio Communication Maintenance Operating Funds Fiscal Year 21. E, Townwide ONM Field Maintenance and Supplies Fiscal Year 21.
Hold.
A hold on E. And there was also a hold on C. F, Town Hall Complex and Senior Housing Fire Suspension System at Police Station Fiscal Year 20. G, North Carver Water District for Well and Infrastructure Debt Fiscal Year 21. A hold on G. And H, Transitional Funding for Interim Town Administrator and Executive Consultant Contract.
Hold.
Have a hold on H. Okay. So, we have holds on... Yep. Yep. So, I have holds on C, E, G, and H. And now, we're going to put the others to vote. So, the others would be A, B, D, and F. So, on those items, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Those items pass unanimously. So, now we'll go back and open other items for debate. So, we're going to start with letter C. And on letter C, I actually have a presentation by Mr. Chief Weston, who, in the event that we had a hold on that, would like to say a few words. So, Mr. Weston, you have the floor.
Does he intend on doing a presentation or wait and see?
It's a presentation, right?
Who the audience...
Yeah.
Excuse me, there was a member that held, so I feel that I should do a presentation.
Yes. Yep. So, we have a visual aid for you, right?
And we'll keep this to about five minutes. You just bear with me. Craig Weston, 17 Meadow Street, your fire chief. The purpose of this article is to fund priorities number one and number two of our four priority step plan of upgrading Carver's townwide and public safety radio infrastructure system. The public safety and townwide radio system upgrade proposal and recommendations have been prepared by Chief Mark Duffilly, EMS Chief Walsh, Deputy Chief Eric Germain, and myself as your fire chief. myself as your fire chief. On the screen is a flow chart of how the communication funds be managed, followed by an Excel flow chart outlining the present and future radio communication needs of our public safety departments, and needed upgrades to existing townwide communication systems for the foreseeable future. The plan represents many hours of research, meetings, and communication, and meetings with communication specialists, and many internal meetings on developing realistic and practical solutions to improve our aging radio systems. In some areas, our radio infrastructure systems are over twenty-five years old. The plan takes into account evolving technologies, ever-changing public safety demands, and also cost. The final plan is broken down into six components, each designated with a priority level. We have established four priority levels, with funding for priorities number one and two as part of this article tonight at town meeting. Priority items number three are being asked to be funded two years from now, and priority items number four, two years after that. The approved funds would be overseen by the direction of a created Public Safety and Townwide Communication Committee, as shown on the screen. You just back up one side. That committee is comprised of the police chief, EMS chief, the fire chief, the town administrator, emergency management director, EPW director, and the superintendent of schools. This article was originally for six-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars to fund all of priority number one and two items. This has been reduced to five-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand dollars due to receiving a competitive community compact grant for ninety-nine thousand dollars. We received that grant about three months ago. Now gonna go through the priority one and two requests, so you know what you're actually funding. A priority one cost for a hundred-and-sixty-two thousand dollars will replace public safety repeaters, receivers, and pagers. We wish to upgrade our current twenty-year, almost twenty-five-year-old communication repeaters and receivers for fire, police, DPW, and EMS. We wish to purchase a device called the JPS voter for DPW. This piece of communication equipment will allow the current DPW channel to receive and transmit radio audio to across the three communications towers in Carver located in North, Center, and South Carver. This will not only increase the DPW coverage throughout the community, but more importantly, it will allow Carver DPW channel to be used as an interoperability channel for the public safety departments. Public safety fire pagers and EMS pages have already been purchased through the CCIT grant that I spoke of before. Another priority one cost for two-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand dollars is a townwide public safety antenna tower. Loading of the antenna tower, it's a miscellaneous radio equipment. The current public safety radio tower located to the rear of One Twelve-A Main Street, the old fire station, was built in the early nineteen-eighties. The antenna tower is quickly, quickly reaching its useful lifespan, and consideration must be given to constructing a new antenna tower. The new antenna tower will be located at the new police station facility and designed to hold our current public safety infrastructure that's on the current tower, plus an antenna for the school department repeater, council and aging repeater, police vapor and channels, and additional antennas for the future. Beginning to this priority is to relocate the school radio repeater, council and aging radio repeater, a new public safety dispatch console, and install remote public safety radios in the dispatch center. One priority two item, which is made up of a few items, is a increase to townwide fiber line extension, licensed microwave link from the fire department to our primary repeater site, and a school bidirectional amplification system. It's called a BDA system. The current public safety radio transmissions within the Carver Middle High School, this building, are very much degraded during emergency incidents. Fire, police, and EMS responders have to conduct radio transmissions from the exterior of the building for other responders and dispatch to hear them. In today's world of threatening situations, that is just not acceptable. An emergency responder should be able to make a clear, concise radio transmission from any part of the interior of this building, so that proper help can be on the way. Installation of this bidirectional amplification system would solve this problem. We have conducted a walkthrough of the school with an electrician and a BDA contractor to get a quote to install the system. It should be noted that there is a BDA system installed in the new Carver Elementary School, which works very well. The goal is to replicate that exact system. We wish to create a fiber link directly between the police dispatch center and our fire station. The link will be a second redundancy to our current microwave system between the two existing facilities. The funding will also be used to connect the new police station into the existing townwide fiber network. This interconnection will give the new police station proper IT connections to operate computers, cameras, and IT systems. We also plan to extend the existing town fiber network from the elementary school to the repeater site, the public safety repeater site located at Thirty-One Main Street. The extension of this fiber will add a redundancy link to our primary repeater system for both fire, police, EMS, and DPW. You should know that part of this system has already been completed with the ninety-nine thousand dollar grant awarded three months ago, however, the fiber converters still need to be purchased. About twelve thousand dollars has been included in the article for anticipated price increases for the project. The detailed plan has been presented to the Select Board and the Finance Committee. Both have unanimously provided their support. And finally, just speaking on behalf of the public safety chiefs, the town administrator, the school superintendent, the Department of Operations Maintenance, we ask you to please support this townwide and public safety radio project. Again, I want to thank you for the support and your time.
Thank you, Chief Weston. So we'll now open this item for debate. Is there anybody that would like to speak on this item? Seeing no hands and no motion to the mic, we'll go ahead and put this to a vote, so all those in favor of item C, Townwide Radio System Infrastructure Priority One and Two Fiscal Year Twenty?
Aye.
Can we do that vote again?
All those opposed? All right, the ayes have it. Item C passes unanimously. The next one we had a hold on was Townwide O&amp;M Field Maintenance and Supplies for Fiscal Year Twenty-One. Do we have anybody who would like to speak on that item?
Captain Banzel, Fifty-One Woodhaven Street. Last year, this was on our town Warren article, and it was supposed to be a one-time thing to supplement the school budget. We're using free cash once again to supplement a salary for the school, which we shouldn't be using free cash to supplement salaries. It goes against our financial policy.
Thank you, Ms. Banzel.
Yeah, if I could respond to that.
I think Mr. Bellbin was, was first. Okay, he's, he's yielding to you.
Mr. Moderator, I know we address this in the evening, but as a non-town resident, I just, I request the right to speak.
Sure, of course.
I acknowledge that I don't live in the town of Carver. So, the opposition is fully funded within the school's operating budget, so this would not be funding opposition, the school as the, as it is being. It would be helping to fund the operations and maintenance department, which is now on, actually, the town's side of the budget.
Thank you, Superintendent Neef. Mr. Bellbin?
So, this money is to offset the costs from, when it was, when we're switching the operation to the town, correct?
So I'm gonna allow, if it's okay, but I'd like Mr. Brothers to address this issue in terms of, because we have some shared facilities with the town. We do operations and maintenance together with the school department and the town. We also do technology. This year, the Board of Selectmen and the school committee voted that we actually reallocated some of our monies within the budget, so that all of the technology staff would now fall under the school department's budget. All of the operations and maintenance staff would now fall on the town's side of the budget. So that, that actually occurred during this year, so right now, I just want to be clear that in no way is this money being used this year to pay for the art teacher. That is fully within the school's operating budget, as proposed in a later article. And Brad might speak a little bit more about that division and split.
Yeah, just to add on to that. So this O&amp;M split, this is specifically for field maintenance for townwide. Originally, the schools, prior to this fiscal year FY20, the schools maintained all of our fields in our operational budget. That now has been switched over to a townwide, and the goal of that is to get seeding and fertilization plan across the board for all of our fields, all under one umbrella, to get a cost effectiveness for the overall budget for both town and school. So that's why this is lumped in. Also on top of this, it's a separate revolving account article, but the rec department is now charging youth fifteen dollars, whatever that amount is, per sport. That is also helping subsidize the O&amp;M budget as well for the field maintenance. So this forty-five thousand really doesn't cover all of that cost, but there are additional revenue sources that kick in to help create that overall account for field maintenance and a fertilization plan.
Thank you. Any other comments or debates on item E? Seeing no hands and no motion to the mic, we're gonna go ahead and put this to a vote. So on item E, Townwide O&amp;M Field Maintenance and Supplies Fiscal Year Twenty-One, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it? By majority vote. Moving on to item G, North Carver Water District for Well and Infrastructure Debt Fiscal Year Twenty-One. Do we have anybody who'd like to speak on this article, or this item, rather? Seeing no hands and no motion to the mic, we'll put this to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it unanimously? On item G. And the last one we have a hold on is item H, Transitional Funding for Interim Town Administrator and Executive Consultant Contract. Do we have anybody who would like to speak on this item? Did I hear something? Okay, seeing no hands and no motion to the mics, we'll go ahead and put this to a vote, so all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it? Passes by majority vote. Article Four, Fiscal Year Twenty-One Operating Budgets for the Town and Enterprise Funds, Funding for OPEB Trust and Stabilization Funds. On this article, majority vote is required. The recommendation for Part A by the Select Board was three to two. Finance Committee, sorry, Part A, Number One, Select Board three to two, Finance Committee ten to zero. Part A, Two, Select Board three to two, Finance Committee ten to zero. Part A, Item Three, Select Board five, zero, Finance Committee ten, zero. And Part A, Item Four, Select Board took no action. On Part B, Select Board voted five to zero, Finance Committee seven to zero, School Committee five to zero for the school budget specifically. And Part C, the Select Board voted five, zero, and Finance Committee ten, zero. On this item, I do have a short presentation by Mr. Rick LaFond, our interim town administrator.
Give me just one moment here, Mr. Moderator.
Sure.
Need to do the magic that the deputy here pulled off.
Can I vote, Mr. Chairman, by Mr. Moderator?
That works.
Yeah. We haven't gotten a motion yet. Open this up, this article, correct?
Uh, yeah, so, but it's not, we're not, we're not starting debate yet, so usually I'll ask for a motion before we start debate. So, he can do his presentation, and then we'll ask for a motion, start debate.
Mr. Jermaine's going to, to his best one.
We'll see what he has there.
I'm sorry.
What did you do to this thing?
I pity Jermaine. Probably wearing a mask, he can't, it's all moments.
You're in, in no mode, aren't you?
What happened, did you spell your name wrong?
Okay, I will keep this very quick, Mr. Moderator.
Sure.
Speaking just to, to the part that goes through the operating budget, it is predicated upon a two-and-a-half percent levy increase. We have a five-year average for new growth on a piece of the new growth number, but there's also some additional funds, some growth estimates that have to do with some potential pilot money from solar projects. Our local receipts is based upon a multi-year average. This budget maintains the revenue split with the school department. It does transfer some operating funds to public works, as was mentioned earlier by the superintendent. It anticipates some savings from LED streetlight conversion. It provides for the finance department reorganization, as well as the full-time EMS chief. And basically, this has got credit, really by building up to the problem we're gonna have potentially. As you can see from our revenue, we've got about a forty-three million dollar budget, forty-four million dollar budget. Twenty-eight percent of that is state aid. And going back some period of time, over the last ten years, state aid has only cumulatively only about a seven-and-a-quarter percent increase over that period of time, which you can do that math. State aid has been slowly drying up. And at twenty-eight percent of the budget, that's a significant amount of what this town's able to do with disposable revenue. For those of you that like visual, that just tells you what the last screen said. The breakdown so far, as you can see, is our school is at the sixth, just under seventy percent, the town is at about thirty percent. Once you eliminate the fixed costs, which are assessments, snow, snow and ice debt, et cetera, we're again, we're in about a thirty-four-point-seven million dollars of expenditures. Keeping in mind that twelve million of that is state aid. And I don't need to get into this too much. And for those that like visuals. The biggest concern we have, I told you it was gonna be brief, so you don't have to hurt your neck, Mr. Superintendent. The biggest issue we have is state aid. The reason why we're here so late, as all of you know, is because the state has not yet provided us with any information with regard to what local aid is gonna look like for FOI21. As you can see from, if you look very quickly, the amount of state aid we have is, is significant. We do not have any idea yet if it's gonna be reduced by the state. We are right now using a, a flat number, but as you can see, merely a one percent, for every one percent increase, I mean, reduction, is about a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. If we have to save, cut ten percent, for instance, we've got a million-dollar problem. We simply have no idea as of right now what those numbers are gonna look like. Various towns are planning different, you know, doomsday scenarios. We have internally looked at some limits, some five percent, seven-and-a-half percent. We haven't really gone to ten percent, just as an internal exercise among the financial officers and school, school and town officers. We're hoping we don't have to go that route. We do feel that if we need to go as deep as seven-and-a-half percent, we could probably do so without compromising any services. If we need to go deeper than that, towards ten percent, I think we're gonna have a, we may have a significant problem in terms of some of the staffing needs, potential reductions in, in services, potential reductions in force. But it's too early for us to say that. And coming into this meeting, we, I think collectively, the Selectmen, the Finance Committee, and our financial group unanimously decided that we would recommend the, the spending plan that had been recommended to, that had been recommended by each body, we would recommend that at the town meeting as is. At such time that we do have information from the state that we can work with, we can come back here in the fall and make those adjustments. We are, as I mentioned internally, we are making at least some provisions for holding our spending as much as possible. For instance, delaying any non-emergency capital expenditures that we anticipate and hope that you'll fund tonight. We will continue our, our spending freeze for all non-essential expenditures, and see you in the fall. Oh, I have, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Moderator, I said it would be quick. The finance director encouraged me to get rid of some of the things I was going to be doing, so.
Yes, well done.
Thank you, Meg. Can all thank Meg.
So, on Article Four, Fiscal Year Twenty-One Operating Budget for Town and Enterprise Funds, Funding for OPEB Trust and Stabilization Funds, do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay, so I have, Miss Heeman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second, so we'll now open this up for debate. Mr. Belvin.
On part A, for the organizational wide chart, I have a little bit of an issue with that. And my issue is that this is something that the organization of town services and how it functions, it should be up to the Board of Selectmen and the town administrator to allow the town, the town administrator and the Board of Selectmen to manage town positions. Coming here and showing you how we manage those positions, that's what this wide, townwide organization chart should be, the way this was created. I have a question to town council is, does, if town meeting votes to approve this, does this limit the town's ability on reduction of services for these positions? Because if we're voting for all of this to come in and all these employees' positions, does it limit us to get rid of them because town meeting told us, no, you have to keep these positions?
Thank you through you, Mr. Moderator, to the speaker. In my opinion, no, it does not limit the discretion that would be afforded to the Board of Selectmen under the general laws or the bylaws of the town. To the extent that the approval of this organizational chart conflicts with the views of the Board of Selectmen that it's authorized to make, then the vote here tonight is for advisory or informational purposes only, in my opinion.
Thank you very much. So that being said, that this is informational, I don't think that we really have to vote, per se, on the organizational charts for either the townwide or the whole town or the finance department. So I make a motion that we vote no on these two articles, part A one and two.
So you're making a motion that we vote no?
Well, I make a motion that we take one, part A one and part A two out of this as a vote individually. Say that right?
Mr. Moderator, through you. I would recommend that the proper procedure for doing that would be a motion to amend, to delete the words amendments to the townwide organizational chart for FY Twenty-One as set forth in Exhibit Appendix A.
Mr. Belvin, does that satisfy you?
That's fine. You want me to write that out?
Yes, please. This is a very long motion, though, so you don't really have to, like, write out the whole thing. I would just say, you know, that you're amending the motion to remove the sentence that Mr. Corbo alluded to. Can you please approach the microphone?
Roger Shaw's Carver. I am confused when Mr. Belvin is talking as a selectman, a select person, or a citizen.
I'm not sure that it really matters in this instance. He's speaking in debate on the article. What, what is the concern?
I'm not sure if he's speaking as a selectman, I'm not sure if he's speaking as a board of selectmen, or if he's speaking as a town resident, he's speaking as a town resident.
I got you. So, Mr. Belvin?
So, in my opinion, is that when I speak here, I speak here as someone who has the same voting capacity as everyone member here in the town. So being a selectman or being a resident standing out here, I have the same capabilities. So it really, in my opinion, doesn't matter if I'm acting as a selectman or a resident. Right now, we're all residents and we're all town meeting members, and my vote carries the same amount of vote as your vote.
So I believe the concern is, is are you speaking on behalf of the select board or are you speaking on behalf of yourself?
I'm speaking on behalf of myself, and if I was speaking on behalf of the board, it would go through the board. That helps.
Okay. Does that satisfy your question, sir? Okay. Okay. So, do we have a copy of the?
Couldn't get, I couldn't get all of Mr. Corbo's, per se, amendments there.
So, uh, so, Mr. Corbo had recommended that we remove the part where it says amendments to the townwide organizational chart for fiscal year twenty-one as set forth in Appendix A. Are you okay with that, Mr. Belvin?
Yes, I am. I'm gonna read that out or again? Okay.
You can go ahead. Okay, so, on the amendment, we have, we have a motion for amendment to strike the portion of the motion that states amendments to the townwide organizational chart for fiscal year twenty-one as set forth in Appendix A. The motion has been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Do we have anybody who'd like to speak on the motion? Right in front, Mr. Jermaine.
Finance Committee spent several meetings with the finance director, with the former town administrator, putting this chart together. This simplifies a lot of processes. I really don't know what the chair and the vice chair have against this particular chart layout. I think it's directed primarily at the finance department and the inclusion of the assessing department, which makes sense to me, and my entire committee for that matter, because it combines everything under one roof. Finance department oversees the budgets of the town. The assessing department is the income side of the statement. The assessing department has been sorely lacking in the function of their job for years. Not just a short time, for years. So we're trying to get that through a lot of hard work from Meg and her department back under control. To the best of my knowledge, the assessors, the elected assessors, voted unanimously to support a combination of this organizational chart, and it will simplify and, I think, help improve the way that department functions. I would suggest and recommend that you vote no on striking this from the warrant.
Mr. Moderator.
If someone moves, I'd like, you yield? Okay. Miss Hewitt?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I am against these organizational charts for the simple reason that I think the way government works here in town is that you guys, you guys tell us what to do, and then we try to get it implemented. We figure out how to do it. So I just don't think it's appropriate for that chart to be in there. Because it's not really a town meeting function, although, you know, you may disagree, but I think more importantly, it's you guys are telling us what we're supposed to do, and it's up to us to figure it out.
In the middle?
Ellen Blanchard, Main Street. I'm on the Board of Assessors. The Board of Assessors, through you, Mr. Moderator, to Mr. Jermaine, we just, we never had the opportunity to take a vote, so it was never even brought up on, excuse me, on our agenda or during a meeting, although you were informed otherwise.
I was informed otherwise, sir.
Yes, you were. I was there when.
Please speak through me. Thank you.
Sorry. However, since I have been in contact with the finance director, and the two of us came up with a solution to the other concerns, we developed a job description for the person whose new, new position that's being created. And I think we're both in agreement that we will see how this goes and that we believe it will work, and I also recommend that we vote no. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, may I help put some context to this perhaps?
What's that?
If I can put some context to this perhaps?
Sure.
I would, everybody should know that the budget itself reflects the fact that this is going to be incorporated as part of the, of the finance department, as you see on the chart. I think we're talking about a technical issue as to whether or not that chart is voted. It's advisory in nature. It doesn't make that happen. What makes it happen is the budget that has been recommended by the finance committee, the Board of Selectmen. The funding is available in the appropriate budgets to create this reorganization. It's not the voting of the chart that creates it, it's the implementing of it through the budget. So I think that's, it's a little bit of, I think we're all talking about and supporting the same thing. It's just a matter of form over substance. And I don't, I don't wanna put words in town council's mouth, but I think his comments pertaining to that being more of an advisory versus illegally binding piece of the warrant, I think is something we should all keep in mind. Regardless of whether or not the town votes to take that out of the motion, it's, the same thing is going to be accomplished.
Yep.
Yeah, and, Mr. LaFond, thank you very much for the clarification, because that was a question I had, is essentially what does it mean to vote down or to vote in favor of this amendment which would remove it from the organizational chart? It's, it's not directly impacting the budget that would be approved and how those funds would be utilized, is my understanding.
Absolutely.
I, I think the organizational chart represents the intent of the increase in the budget or the changes in the budget. The organizational chart is a representation of how those funds should be allocated or what the intent was behind the dollar amount in the budget. But, so, and we, as a finance committee, felt very strongly that the modification of the organizational chart to align assessing under the finance director was a critical part of improving the financial health of the town. The assessing department, in a lot of ways, is the oxygen of the town, and to deprive the finance director with the ability to manage that department effectively is constricting our ability to breathe. And so, and I don't mean to be melodramatic with the analogy, but I think it's important because this was something that was thought out and considered over an extensive period of time by people that we pay and trust to run the finances of the town. And so I, I think it was an important decision to organize the department this way, and, you know, again, the finance committee unanimously supported it because we thought it was important for the future of the department. I think that the representation of the org chart versus the budget is, that distinction is critical and very important, and hopefully the budget gets approved subsequent to this, and not, this is not a precursor for, for reducing the budget for the finance department so that they can make the necessary changes so that we can continue to get the oxygen we need.
Sir.
Steve Doers, Fifty-two Forest Street. What's curious is, we've been coming to town meeting for well over a hundred years, and we've never, never voted on an org chart until the previous administration was here, the previous town administrator was here. And what I'm hearing is that this doesn't, this is advisory, this is informational, this doesn't affect how the funds will be handled. Why are we voting on it? Why have we made this change to vote on an org chart when it doesn't apparently, when it's simply informative and it's not dedicating any funds to anything? I recognize people have worked hard on this org chart, but that doesn't explain why we're voting on the org chart. This, this body can tell the fire department how much money we're gonna allocate for them every year, but nobody here would pretend to tell the fire department how to spend that money in order to provide their services. They know better how to spend the money. So, again, it is absolutely mysterious to me why we're voting on this org chart if it has no force.
Mr. Moderator, if you don't mind?
Sure.
As I, I agree with you, Steve. I would just say, though, that I certainly wouldn't want anybody here to believe that if you accept this budget that's been proposed by all parties, that this isn't going to happen. The budget does provide funding for this, and I think, as you mentioned, it's more of a form issue. There's a, you know, there's a legislative body vote for an organizational chart. Well, I do think it's, it's very illustrative because a lot of people worked hard, and it does justify the recommendation for funding. So I don't want anybody to believe that with or without the amendment that we're not gonna go forward and implement what is, what is the intent of all the parties here who worked to create that organizational chart.
Thank you. Sir, on the left.
Mr. Moderator, Alan Dunham, Eleven Ricard Street. Whether it's advisory or not, I have to disagree with a couple of prior statements that we elect the select board to make all those decisions. This does provide us with the opportunity to inform the select board of how the body would like to see them go forward on this particular subject. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunham. What's that? Well, if you'd like to speak, you can have the floor.
Everybody's correct, but this provides the roadmap. This is the same roadmap that we approved last year with no debate, the year before with no debate, the year before with no debate. So to get nitpicky now and eliminate something from it, my fear is, is that if they, if this body says no, there's nothing to stop this board from coming back in and changing what's already been allocated and saying, well, we're not gonna do it this way, we're gonna do it this way instead because town meeting voted that down anyway. This is nothing more than a roadmap that defines, it's a flow chart. It defines who's doing what to the benefit of the town. That was the whole purpose of it. It then got funded. So the idea that it's funded and with and without this motion, it's still gonna happen the way it's said in the, in the funding is not entirely true. It's adjustable because it gets removed. So I still would request that this body vote no on removing those two items.
Thank you, Mr. Jermaine. Seeing no hands and no further action to the mic, we'll go ahead and put the amendment to the motion to remove the language from the motion that says amendments to the townwide organizational chart for fiscal year twenty-one as set forth in Appendix A. So, all those in favor of removing that language? If you vote yes, by the way, you are voting to remove that language from the, the motion. If you vote no, you're voting to leave the motion as it is. So all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The motion does not pass by majority vote.
I'd like to move the question, Mr. Moderator.
Do we have any other comments on the main motion? Seeing no motion to the mics and no hands on the main motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it? The motion passes by majority vote. Article Five, Capital Improvements Budget. Again, similar to how we handled Article Three, we will ask for a motion on the article in general, and then I will read each of the items under the, the purpose column. And if you would like to hold that item so that we can debate it further, just please shout "hold" and we'll come back to it. And before we do that, we'll, we'll go ahead and vote on the items that were not held. So with that said, usually we give Mr. Engle an opportunity to, to present on this or to say a couple of words on this. I don't know if he's shown up or if he's here or if someone else from the committee wants to, to say a few words. No? Okay. So I will entertain a motion.
Motion, we approve Article Five as written.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and second to approve Article five as written in the warrant. So, as I mentioned, I'll go ahead and read each of the items and if you would like to debate it, just go ahead and shout "hold." So Item A, storage upgrade with movable walls, finance fiscal year '20.
Hold.
Have a hold on A. Item B, replace two HVAC units, second floor school admin building. Item C, replace synchronized clock system, middle high school.
Hold.
Have a hold on Item C. Item D, sports field irrigation, middle high school. Item E, F-550 catch basin truck with plow, purchase and equip. Item F, energy efficiency project to reduce electric consumption fiscal year '20.
Hold.
Have a hold on Item F. Item G, replace election tabulator equipment. Item H, mobile defibrillators, SCBA thermal can, personal protective equipment lockers. Item, item I, sorry, engine four frame reconditioning. Item J, police and fire equipment for new hires fiscal year '20. Item K, police station building and furniture fixtures and equipment, security, phone, data, AV, equipment dispatch fiscal year '20. Item L, police cruiser replacement, purchase and equip two cruisers. Item N, townwide technology infrastructure and equipment.
Hold.
Have a hold on Item M. Item N, district-wide curriculum upgrade, modern education. Item O, replace school 71 passenger buses, purchase and equip.
Hold.
Have a hold on Item O. Item P, replace school minibus, purchase and equip. Item Q, upgrade culinary classroom, purchase, install and renovate.
Hold.
Have a hold on Item Q. Item R, library, library arch study then upgrade renovations. Item S, annual reduction in debt exclusion for new elementary schools, solar. Item T, debt service, lease payments, interest, project management, disclosure, statement. So I have holds, holds on A, C, F, M, O, and Q. So on all other items, we'll go ahead and put those to a vote. So all those in favor of approving all of those items except those which I have just mentioned that are being held?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it unanimously by majority vote?
It's two-thirds.
Uh, two-thirds, sorry. Yep, and I also forgot to mention the recommendations by the Select Board were five, zero, Finance Committee, Part 10, zero, and Capital Outlay Committee, three, zero. So, moving back to the items that were held, the first one held was A, storage upgrade with movable walls, finance fiscal year '20. Any debate on Item A?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Bellman.
My question is, is, is this really needed to be done now? And what is the purpose of it?
Does anybody want to answer that?
I believe the Finance Director will speak to it.
Sean.
Mr. Jermaine?
No, ma'am.
Oh, Maegan.
Ma'am.
Maegan May, sorry.
This is due to a storage issue in the Finance Department because the attic is pretty much full and we have important records that need to be kept downstairs that are accessible. And this would be put into the treasure collector's vault, just very similar to the one that the town clerk has in their vault. But it is due to a severe lack of storage in our vault.
Any other comments or debate on Item A? Seeing no hands and no movement to the mics, all those in favor of Item A, storage upgrade with movable walls fiscal year '20?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it by two-thirds vote. Item C, replace synchronized clock system, middle high school. Any comments or debate on that item?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Bellman.
Is this really needed also? This is going to be my standard question, that why do we need this and can it wait?
So the, since the clock system at the middle high school is the original system to the building, at times it doesn't operate properly. For example, when we have to change the time, when we have daylight savings time, custodians actually have to go around manually change all the clocks. And at times it doesn't sync right, so not all the clocks in the building are reading the same time. That's the purpose of the request because, you know, it's original to the system and not operating properly.
Thank you, Mr. Neef.
Sure.
Mr. Jermaine.
Those sound like a Scrooge here. I, I would argue that 99.9% of the kids that enter this building tell what time it is from their cellphone. I'm not even sure that two-thirds of them even know what the clock on the wall looks like. I think that in this environment, $45,000 so that we don't have to go around and reset individual clocks, really? Maybe this is a better item for next year when we're a little more flush.
Thank you, Mr. Jermaine. Seeing no more motion to the mics, no hands, all those in favor of Item C, replace synchronized clock system, middle high school?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Ooh.
God.
So that's a close one. So we're going to go ahead and do a hand count on this. So we're going to do the vote one more time, have your cards ready. And when I say all those in favor, if you're in favor, just go ahead and raise your card in the air. When I say all those opposed, if you're opposed, go ahead and raise your card in the air. Please hold it up nice and high and hold it up until we've asked you to lower them to make it easier on our vote counters tonight. Thank you.
We'll use it next year.
So, on Item C, replace synchronized clock system, middle high school, all those in You can lower your hands now. You can put your hands down. Okay, so we have 44 in favor, 25 against. It does not carry by two-thirds. Thank you, everybody. Item F, energy efficiency project to reduce electrical consumption fiscal year '20. Would anybody like to speak on this item?
Jennifer Bogart, 116 Cranberry Road. I noticed it's on the chart for this year and the following five years for a $600,000. I just, what is the energy efficiency project?
Is there anybody who would like to answer that question?
Moderator, speak on that.
Yes, sir.
Dave Seintoff, 73 Center Street, Director of Operations. That was through last year of a town meeting, I believe, the town approved to enter the Green Communities Act and we have to spend certain amount of dollars every year. And in the fifth year, we have to reduce our energy consumption throughout the town to receive the monies. This is refundable money through Serpent. So this year, we are spending X amount of dollars on projects to reduce our energy consumption by the fifth year. So it is a five-year plan.
So three, Mr. Moderator, so we're spending $100,000, leave the budget for it, but we're getting it back from Serpent.
Correct.
In what timeframe, do we know?
Uh... I need to... The money from Serpent for the Green Communities Act, old, in the week, when they bring it back. Five, let's go here. It, I believe it's in, in the same fiscal year.
Okay, great.
I'm sorry, I'm corrected, it is from the state, not Serpent.
Okay, but it comes back to us.
Yes.
Seeing no further movement to the mics and no hands, we'll go ahead and put this to a vote. So on Item F, energy efficiency project to reduce electric consumption fiscal year '20, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion carries by two-thirds vote. Item M, townwide technology infrastructure equipment. Anybody like to speak on this item? Mr. Bellman?
What is actually going to be done with this money? Because we see a lot of our, other articles and monies going into the townwide technology. What are we getting from money? It's $300,000 here. And is there an accounting of how, where this money is going and how much is it going to?
Mr. Moderator, I have the background for that.
Sure.
So townwide technology is both a combination between town and school. We blended this year a contract for townwide copiers, that is 85,000 of the just over 300. Town and school PC replacements, there's $26,000 allocated towards each. That's for every, let's say, teacher's workstation, there's a replacement cycle for that, same in town hall. Chromebooks, there's $100,000 allocated in that. Middle high school classroom upgrades, right now we're looking at the, is it science, what department is it for here?
The science for the projections.
The projections, yeah. The projection screens, that's 40,000, that'll be in every individual science room. Townwide internet is two gigs, that's 25,000. And we are looking to slowly increment funding for a townwide wireless access points. This is one of, year one of three. It's due in year three, but this will incrementally add on to fully fund that. And you can actually finance that for a zero percent down payment. So incrementing that, we, the goal of the townwide tech line was kind of to keep it in the 300 to 400,000 range. As you see, increments in the 10-year forecast, it does go up. But reality is, you guys know how, how the 10-year plan works, is we didn't want to have townwide technology be 300 one year, 700 the next, back down to three. So we're trying to implement things incrementally to slowly budget them. So in year three, for example, this townwide wireless access points, we have all the money to pay it all at once. That kind of makes sense. So that's the individual breakdown. But you'll see the goal, like for Chromebooks, for example, the goal next year was to build that up so we have a replacement cycle the following year to fully fund everything. So it does sit, Chromebooks is one example that does sit on the account for one year. Same thing as townwide wireless access points. But if we didn't have that this year, it'd be, we'd be, the, the requests would fluctuate so much year to year that it wouldn't be able to fit in our 10-year capital plan.
Follow-up.
Sure.
It seems like a lot of what you just said, it's school. And how, how much of that breakdown is, is school to town? I mean...
So townwide copiers, for example, is 85,000. I would say it's probably in the ballpark of 50 to 35,000 for that split. 50,000 for the schools, 35 for the town. Town strictly 26,000 for PC replacement. Townwide internet, again, you could split it by building, it depends on how you want to break that out, that's 25,000. And the wireless access points is the same, it's all in a shared system. So wrapping...
And you also have to remember, our technology department is a shared department of the town and the school department.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And I guess I, before the point, if I can make one more comment, if that's okay, Alan?
Probably what I was going to say, sir.
Well, I don't know, maybe not. But through this townwide technology line item that was established a few years back and has been funded through capital, I don't know the exact number of years, but at least the last four or five years. The town has really made a great commitment to the technology and the infrastructure of both the school system, but I think for the town as a whole. And, and I think there's been a real strength and a real power that's been brought to the community through our townwide technologies department. And I think fusing those departments has really been a positive for this community. And, and in some ways, through this capital, capital line item, it's the way that, that gets funded, which is really important community-wide. So I, and to Brad's point, the concept, Mr. Bellman, is that concept of trying to keep the cost similar around that $300,000 line item because if you, if you waited and you said, "Okay, now we need this big purchase because we need to replace all these computers because we didn't replace them. We didn't get, we didn't get it processed, we didn't set up a system to replace them." So the goal here is to maintain around this line item, but that would, that would, by supporting this, you're supporting technology townwide, which is a huge investment in our school system, but in our town as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Neef. Seeing no further movement to the mics and no hands raised, all those in favor of Item M, townwide technology infrastructure equipment?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, passes by two-thirds vote. Next item is Item O, replace school 71 passenger buses, purchase and equip. Anybody like to speak on that item? Mr. Jermaine?
This for one bus?
Two.
Two buses. So I, I think I brought this up last year too. This makes me crazy for some reason. We've had the buses parked since April. And again, we don't know where we're going revenue-wise this year. This is $165,000 on, on assuming the buses that we're replacing still function and run. And we don't even know what's going to happen this coming school year. We don't know if there's going to be a school year. We don't know how many kids are going to be in a classroom. We don't know what's going to happen this coming year. Are they going to be utilized? Most likely. But I would argue maybe this is $165,000 we can delay to one more year.
Well, I think maybe Mr. Rose and I may both address this. It does replace buses that are from 2008 and the school system right now just has a replacement cycle. Ultimately, the town is committed to having our own transportation department. As part of that transportation department, it makes sense to purchase a bus or two buses every year. So we're replacing buses that are 12 years old. And to the second point, I don't disagree. And, and obviously, when we come back in the fall, and Mr. LaFawn referenced coming back in the fall that we're going to have to come back, we, we would be at this point willing to, we would have, we would reconsider that if we had to, if we came back into the fall town meeting. We'd look for that approval now and would be willing to hold off on the purchase until the fall town. Mr. Rose, I don't know if you want to add anything on to that?
No, just to add on to that quickly is, the replacement cycle we have is, we try to shoot for four buses every three years. Obviously, we don't always stay within that range, but that's the goal of keeping a replacement cycle. And the older buses unfortunately do have a lot of maintenance cost on them. So if we were to reduce this, we, our operational budget would actually have to add on general maintenance upkeep for the 2008 buses.
Thank you, gentlemen. Seeing no hands raised, no movement to the mics, all those in favor of Item O, replace school 71 passenger buses, purchase and equip?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion passes by two-thirds vote. Item Q, upgrade culinary classroom, purchase, install and renovate. Item Q, Upgrade Culinary Classroom Purchase, Install and Renovate. Anybody would like to speak on this item? Mr. Belvin?
That was mine again. So similar to Mr. Jermaine's comments, it's a hundred thousand dollars to upgrade. The culinary program's a great program, and they've had a lot of accomplishments in that program. But we don't know what's gonna happen with the culinary program or the school system. I think we should wait on this. It's a hundred thousand dollars we can keep in our back pocket in case something else happens, and come back here again in the fall or next year. Thank you.
Similar response to the buses in terms of, this is something the school department is willing to wait on until the fall, but I would urge you to approve it now. And then if we, for some reason, we come back in the fall and the budget deficits that we're facing, we would be willing to reconsider this, would hold on purchasing until that time. In terms of the culinary upgrades that were planned, I don't know how many people know that the culinary program at the middle high school has been very successful. And really, the culinary teacher's really done it out of what you would consider an old home ec room. And slowly but surely, we've been trying to bring in some modern equipment into that space. And this has actually been on the Capitol Outlay Requests since I've been superintendent, so I know at least five years, maybe even longer. And, you know, so we'd be looking to install a hood fan with an appropriate fire suppression system, plumbing and electrical upgrades, a convection oven, a commercial fryolator, a commercial grill and flat grill. So the culinary program would be using modern equipment, not the stove that you use at home.
Thank you, Mr. Neef. On the left?
Hi, Hon Marie Foran, Twenty-seven Eight South Middle Village. I am against this, and the reason why I am against it is because we have a culinary yacht program at Old Colony boat that's going really well, and we send our kids over to there, so why do we need to spend more money for here? And also, I do believe that this may have come about because they were considering something to do with the Council on Aging through the other town administrator. So I am against this.
Thank you, Ms. Foran. On the right?
So if I can respond through you, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, yep.
Is that...
Oh, I'm sorry, we had somebody on the right.
Okay, good.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right.
You know, so at this time, we are not pursuing, we're not looking to pursue creating a Chapter Seventy-four program, which would be a vocational program approved to the state. But there are some students who remain at County Middle High School who still have an interest in culinary. So we don't view this as program as in direct competition to Old Colony Vocational. And honestly, I'm not sure what you're referencing in terms of the Council on Aging. The program would be totally one-hundred percent to support the students of our school.
Thank you, Mr. Neef.
Jason Greenwood, eleven Maine. And just to add on, we are looking to expand this pathways program, which has already been approved. And culinary has already shown to be a success, so suggest another step toward that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jermaine?
I think it's important for this group to know that everything in Article Five tonight, as it gets approved, does not mean that we're running out tomorrow morning and writing checks. I appreciate Scott's comment that we'll hold off on spending some of this money till the fall town meeting. The big scare is, again, is we don't know what we don't know yet. So we can approve this four million dollars, but it doesn't mean we're gonna run out tomorrow morning and write four million dollars' worth of checks. So I appreciate the holding back on the buses and so forth and so on. I think the culinary classroom, I don't see it being a big problem, provided we are not on path to try to compete with Old Colony, because then it will become a huge conflict for this town, to divide the groups up. I think the culinary program's a fabulous idea for the local, for the, for our high school. I think it's a great idea.
Thank you, Mr. Jermaine. Yep, in the middle.
Tony Rota, Three Canterbury Path. I'm not really finding it as a competition against Old Colony. I think Old Colony's a great school. I teach here at the high school, and I know what Chef does with his classroom, it's a great thing. I just think we, we have only so many seats at Old Colony, so there are kids here that are, that can't get into Old Colony, that this is another opportunity for them to, you know, be successful and have a path here to do. Sorry, that's what I feel.
Thank you. On the right?
Phil Shannon, Seven Bow Street. I just wanted to come up and support this program, because my daughter went through it, and I think it's a great program, so I want to encourage people to vote yes for it.
Okay. Is there any new information, other than just sort of I support it, I don't support it, because we can vote, and that'll be the final say there, but... Yeah, all right, okay. All right. So seeing no further motion to the mics, all those in favor of item Q, Upgrade Culinary Classroom Purchase, Install and Renovate?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion carries by two-thirds of vote. Article Six, Community Preservation Committee Report and Recommendations. Mr. Robert Bentley, Chairman of the CPC Committee, has asked to say a few words.
Mr. Moderator, Bob Bentley, Sixty Wenham Road, Chairman of the Community Preservation Committee. I'd like to move the, the town approve the Article Six as set forth in the warrant.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve the article as set forth in the warrant. Please note, this requires a majority vote. Recommendation by the select board was five to zero, finance committee was seven to zero. Community Preservation Committee...
Seven, zero.
Seven, zero, okay, cool. It was not in here, thank you. Okay, so we'll go ahead and open that up for debate. Mr. Belvin?
So my first question for this is, how much liability does this equate, the three hundred and twenty-nine thousand and twenty-five? How much is that in the liability of how much we owe for debt service?
If you'd like to answer, Mr. Bentley?
I'm not sure I understand what you mean by liability.
Well, the town has used the CPA fund to fund certain projects. Irrigation of the sports fields, other things like that, the playgrounds and everything like that. And that money was put all into a bond.
Right, a ten-year bond.
Right, for a liability. So this three hundred and twenty-nine thousand for open space in the high school, middle school fields, this three hundred and twenty-nine, how much is that paying off for bonds? Is that whole amount going to pay the bonds?
That whole amount is going to pay the, pay off bond.
So three hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars in one year to pay off bonds off of CPA.
Right.
And this is gonna go on for ten years?
Ten-year bond.
Ten-year bond.
This is year two.
And we're only in year two? Thank you. It's a lot of money, just my opinion.
Thank you, gentlemen. Seeing no more motion to the mics and no hands, on Article Six, Community Preservation Committee Report and Recommendations, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion passes by majority vote. Article Seven, Creation of a Stabilization Fund for a New Middle High School Building. It is a, this does require a two-thirds of vote. The recommendation by the select board was five, zero, and finance committee was ten, zero. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and seconded on Article Seven. Any comments or debate on Article Seven?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Belvin?
On number two, it says in the second line, dedication, it allows the dedication without further appropriations. So this allows the money without any further appropriation from this town to utilize. And then on number three, it turns around and says to dedicate thirty-three and one-third percent of the revenue from solar funds to the new middle high school capitalization fund. So all the new funds for revenue coming in from the solar funds are gonna be purchased, pushed over into this other stabilization fund, which is a lot of money every year. When does this end? Is this gonna keep going every year, every year, every year, thirty-three and three percent?
If you'd like to answer?
This is the windfall from the solar projects. At this point in time, there's about six hundred thousand dollars a year coming into this town from the solar projects that are in place. One-third of that is gonna be designated, set aside for the eventual replacement of this building. Is it gonna be enough? Of course it isn't. Is it gonna be an oversized drop in the bucket? Most likely. But it's gonna be something, which is better than nothing, and this is found money coming in from the solar projects. And it's part of a twenty-year contract with the solar projects. So what better place to put it than in something that we're gonna eventually need anyway? We can't put it in the operating budget, it has a sunset. So we can't use that money to fund payroll. We could buy a new school bus, but we're gonna eventually need to spend, I think Middleborough's a hundred and fifty million dollars on a new high school. Eventually, this is gonna have to happen here. This is not gonna stand forever, whether it's gonna be ten years, fifteen years, twenty years, when this solar project sunset. They're gonna continue to grow. We don't know what the value of the battery storage project on Main Street is gonna eventually be. One-third of that money will also go into this. Potentially, this could be a million dollars, two million dollars a year, depending upon where this goes to at the other end. I personally won't be here when we build a new high school, most likely, by following my father's footsteps. So, that being said, my kids will have a little bit easier time funding a new school that will probably be three hundred million dollars by the time it happens, but better we should have maybe fifty million dollars set aside that's grown in interest to offset, two-fifties better than three hundred. So that's my only argument. I think that this is found money. This is a great place to put that money and tie it up. We don't need it for a rainy day fund, we have plenty of money sitting in reserves, and this is a good place to put the solar fund, or at least a third of it. Thank you.
Does that answer your questions?
Mr. Moderator, through you.
Yeah, well, there was the matter of Mr. Belvin's question, but I just want to make sure that your question was answered by Mr. Jermaine?
Yeah, I have a follow-up, but...
Okay.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Moderator, just a point of clarification. In paragraph two, when it says dedication of funds without further appropriation, what that means, when you read two and three together, is that one-third of the revenue from the solar projects is automatically going to go into this stabilization fund, and it will not require a town meeting appropriation to put that money into the fund. However, in order to take the money out of that fund for any purpose, including construction of a new school, it will take a two-thirds town meeting vote.
Thank you. Mr. Belvin?
Mr. Moderator, my follow-up here is that Mr. Jermaine had stated battery storage, but that's not added into it, it just says solar funds. Should we include battery storage to this article also, to include that?
It's part of the, sorry? Yeah, it's really within the same bylaw. I mean, it's up, you can amend this and include all solar and battery storage projects, but I think that the solar projects and the battery storage are still in the same... The intent was, when this was being drawn over with the former town administrator, the intent was to put all of this fund, all of these revenue sources into third, a third, a third.
So the intent is also to keep the battery storage money, also to split that a third? I just, that's the intent, Mr. Moderator, through you, if that's the intent, that's fine. I have no problem with the language as it sets forth, because we know that this is a record as of, that that's the intent of this article. The other one is, is kind of a little off skew, but we also have Old Colony that's gonna want to upgrade their school too. So we may want to think about how we're going to help fund that assessment that we'll get when they do their upgrades to their buildings. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Moderator, if the intent of the bylaw is to include future battery storage projects, I think that language needs to be added so it's specific, because there is no battery storage bylaw. So if it is the will of town meeting to put the future battery storage funds in there, I think it needs to be explicitly included in that.
We actually approved the battery storage project.
So we have Ms. LaMay comment on whether or not battery storage is included in solar funds? We're gonna, we're gonna need you near my mic, I'm sorry.
Just making amendment.
We have solar agreements that are, that have been earmarked to fund, that will be included in the revenue forecast and then allocated one-third, one-third, one-third. Whether battery storage was part of that, that was never specified in the projects during the pipeline. I actually don't have an answer for that, as to whether they have battery storage tied to them. I just know what the solar projects are, where they are, and what the amounts are.
Can I offer an amendment? Make an amendment to Article Seven that we change paragraph three to see if the town will vote to dedicate thirty-three and a third percent of the revenue from solar funds and battery storage to the new middle high school capitalization.
All right, so we have...
We're just gonna simply add the words "and battery storage."
Right. Hold on one sec. So the challenge here is that the scope of the article covers solar funds as was written in the warrant. It doesn't cover battery funds. And Ms. LaMay is unsure of whether or not battery funds are actually included in solar funds when it comes to the specifics on the books. So this would not be in scope, because we did not come here tonight to do anything with battery funds. Which bylaw are we referring to?
Yeah, it's within the solar bylaws. So, you, Mr. Moderator, so could we use the words "including" battery storage fund?
Mr. Belvin?
So under our use regulation schedule, it does have battery storage put in there. When I go to large-scale solar, I don't see anything that puts me to battery storage. Because it is under our use schedule here, I don't think there'd be a problem with this being put in this amendment, because it is in here in our use schedule, and it is, it's, a special permit is needed for it. So, I mean, I'm not a lawyer, but if it's in our bylaws here, then there's gotta be a funding mechanism somewhere that controls it. So that's my opinion. That's, this is the newest bylaw, so... This is the newest bylaw, so...
The project in place is...
Right, but the question is, is whether or not, whether or not that, that classifies as solar funds. So the fact that there's a project in place is, is one thing, but whether or not we can use that money and classify it as solar funds is another.
Mr. Moderator, through you.
I'm going to modify the language.
Mr. Moderator, through you, please.
Yep.
The issue here is not whether or not battery storage funds can be put aside into a stabilization fund. The only issue is whether the warrant gave the voters sufficient notice that there were going to be two potential sources of revenue, solar funds and battery storage. And so the question ultimately is the moderator's call, whether or not the term "solar funds" also encompasses battery storage solely for purposes of giving the voters notice of what was going to be voted on. If the moderator's decision is that this warrant was not sufficient to include battery storage, that does not preclude you from coming back at the next town meeting and amending this fund to also include battery storage. So the issue here is not one of substance, it's one of procedure, and whether the warrant gave the voters sufficient notice of what you're, you're asking to do now.
With your permission.
Right.
I would argue, thank you, though. I would argue that everybody in town, when you mention solar, automatically thinks of solar encompassing battery also, because there's been so much talk about it. There's been umpteen planning board meetings that dealt with solar projects and then dealt with battery storage projects tying back into the grid. It's, it's, as far as I see it, it's all the same thing. And I would argue that, I've ventured to guess, that most of the people that have watched this happen would feel the same way. But it's entirely up to you.
Yeah, with regards to the bylaw that you're, you're referencing, I mean, does the bylaw in some way, shape, or form tie battery storage funds to solar funds?
No, it doesn't, only because the whole thing is brand-new.
Right.
Everything is evolved.
Right.
So, you know.
I'm not an expert on, on solar power or battery storage, but, but to me, it seems like they're, they're two separate things at present. So we're going to, we're going to say that that's out of order for now, but I do encourage you to bring that to the next town meeting.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator.
Yep.
So I'm looking under our bylaws, under solar. Solar also includes wind energy facilities, and I'm only like halfway through the whole thing. So I mean, but if you turn around and say "solar," okay, funds, well, under the solar bylaw, it also says wind facilities. So would that also, Mr.?
What about the solar field?
So if it's...
Would that include in it?
You're, you're asking a question about wind, which is not even Germaine's of the conversation.
Well, it's part of the same bylaw as the solar.
Right, but we're talking about battery storage, we're not talking about wind. So if you have, if you have something relevant to battery storage that you'd like to present, then I'd be more than welcome, more than happy to take a look at that, but...
I'm only going through, I'm trying to go through it as quick as I can.
Yeah, but...
I'm just saying is that if, if someone developed a wind solar, I mean, a wind turbine here, and would a third of that money go to that, because it doesn't say solar funds, but it's part of the same bylaw?
If, Ms. Lemay, I mean, if it's part of the same fund, then one can, can assume that.
The Board of Selectmen did owe a policy on earmarking the one-third, one-third, one-third. Did that specify whether it was strictly solar?
No, it was used as solar. It probably should have been classified as alternative energy, and then it would have encompassed everything. I think that we just gave it the word solar because it was easy, but that's, that's, that's what we're talking about. Solar windmill, which we're, I don't expect we're going to have. Is it the energy that's stored in the batteries from solar? Yeah, well...
I don't know.
One of the projects is getting a recharge from the grid, and then they'll dump it back into the grid. But again, it's still, it's an alternative energy program.
Yeah. All right, so, I mean, there's been no evidence presented to me to, to change my mind in terms of whether or not battery storage is included in solar funds, so just let this be a warning that these things have to be more specific in the future. We ran into a couple of these issues last year as well, too. So at this point, that's not going to be within scope. We're going to move forward.
Fix it in the fall.
Without that amendment.
What was the question?
Seeing no movement to the mics and no hands on Article seven, creation of a stabilization fund for new middle high school building, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, by two-thirds vote. Article eight, to see if the town will vote to rescind the following amounts that have been authorized to be borrowed but which are no longer needed for the purpose for which they were approved. This would require a majority vote. The select board voted four-zero, the finance committee seven-zero. Do we have a motion?
I move that town approve Article eight as printed in the warrant.
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve Article eight as written in the warrant. Any discussion on Article eight? Seeing no hands and no movement to the mics, all those in favor of Article eight?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Article nine, an act to exempt the deputy chief of police from the provision of the civil service laws.
I move the town vote to approve Article nine as set forth in the warrant.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on Article nine. This does require a majority vote. Recommendation from the select board was five-zero, finance committee was ten-zero. Would anybody like to speak on this item? Seeing no hands and no motion to the mics, all those in favor of Article nine, an act to exempt the deputy chief of police from provisions of the civil service laws?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries by majority vote. Article ten, civil fingerprinting authority for police department.
I move the town approve Article ten as set forth in the warrant.
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve Article ten, civil fingerprinting authority for police department as printed in the warrant. This article requires a majority vote. Recommendation by the select board was five to zero. Do we have any discussion on this item? Yep.
John Gasky, one sixty-two Plymouth Street. With regards to adding on something else for the police department to do, I'm opposed to it. There are plenty of other civil facilities that can provide the background information as well as the fingerprinting services. It's just one more thing that, that bogs down the police department with more and more paperwork. They have, they have enough to do on, on their hands with regards to licensing and policing our neighborhoods. They don't need this.
Thank you, sir. Seeing no motion to...
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Germaine?
Could I request that we're going to have somebody talk negatively about it, can we hear from the chief?
It's up to him. Chief Dufilly?
Sorry, chief.
So, thank you, Ms. Gasky. The amendments before you tonight is the same as where he and every other town. Chapter six, one seventy-two B, requires us, if somebody's going to apply for, it was brought to us today, this was brought to us because somebody applied for a ice cream permit to run a ice cream truck, and that requires us to do the background check, us to do fingerprinting. But without the bylaw passed by town meeting, the police department can't do that. So this does add some work, though, to, to the department, but state law requires us to be able to perform that, to check specifically with the ice cream trucks, if they have any felony convictions or, or not, and we need to do that by, based on a fingerprint background check. So it just authorizes to take the fingerprints, send them off to the state, into the FBI, receive the information back, pass that along to the, the select board so they can make a decision on whether or not they're going to give that permit out or not. That's what it does. It's not a great deal of work, but you're right, it is some, some work, but it is required by law if we're going to do it, the town meeting authorized the police department to take fingerprints from somebody who's not charged with a crime. We can do that, so we need the bylaw to do that. If you vote against it, then we can't do that, and we can't offer that to the residents of the town. If you vote for it, it allows us to get the fingerprints, submit them into the state, into the FBI, to get that background check done.
Thank you, chief.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Belvin?
In relationship to the information that's gathered in these cases here, who has access to those information? Isn't it limited to our human resources, you and then the human resources officer for the town? It doesn't actually get given to the Board of Selectmen, correct? It's only like a yes or no?
Chief, yep?
Yes, that's correct. We, working together, Mr. Belvin, with myself and the Board of Selectmen, would come up with how we would handle that, but you're right, the information would come back to the police department where it's held, and then a very limited part of that would be answered out to who needed to make the decision. With the ice cream permit, if the Board of Selectmen sought to, they could put that all in the police department so that they never had to transmit the information to anybody. Once we got it back and they were cleared, we could sign off on the permit and move forward. You're right, the information is limited to staying with us, unless it needs to be very specific.
Thank you very much, chief.
Thank you, gentlemen. Seeing no further motion to the mics and no hands on Article ten, the single fingerprinting authority for police department, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article eleven, finance committee bylaw change. This is, does require a majority vote. Select board voted five to zero, and finance committee voted ten to zero. Do we have a motion?
I move the town approve Article eleven as set forth in the warrant.
Second.
We have a motion, the motion made and seconded. Do we have any discussion on Article seven, eleven?
Information.
Yes, sir.
This is cleaning up language that should have been moved a long time ago, when the master plan committee, the governance committee, got together and decided to offer the members of the FINCOM a stipend that was passed, I believe, we dug up on it, I think, Elaine, correct me if I'm wrong, it was three years ago, I think, it was passed? Something like that? And it should have been cleaned up in the language, and it never was. So this just cleans up the bylaw.
Thank you, sir. Seeing no further motion to the mic and no hands on Article eleven, finance committee bylaw change, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article twelve, commission on disability bylaw change. This item does require a majority vote. Select board voted five-zero, and commission on disability voted six-zero-one. We have a motion.
I move the town approve Article twelve as set forth in the warrant.
We have a motion made and seconded on Article twelve. Is there any discussion? Seeing no motion on Article twelve, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article thirteen, transfer tax title parcels to conservation commission. This does require two-thirds vote. Select board voted five-zero, finance committee voted ten-zero. Do we have a motion?
I move the town approve Article thirteen as set forth in the warrant.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded. Any discussion on Article thirteen? So, seeing no motion on Article thirteen, transfer tax title parcels to conservation commission, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Article carries by two-thirds vote. Article fourteen is a petition article. We do have a presentation by Mr. Cornelius Shea.
Thank you. Cornelius Shea, one forty-eight Plymouth Street, Carver. I'm going to keep this really, really quick. I was asked to give a brief explanation tonight on the proposed bylaw before us. The originator of this article is unfortunately out of town due to his son's induction into the U.S. Navy in Annapolis. The purpose of this law is to limit the ability of the town in the taking of properties by eminent domain and to strengthen the protection of private property rights. The proposed bylaw limits the town from transferring properties to entities that are not part of the municipal government, such as private developers, and to further limit the taking of property by eminent domain for the actual public use and ownership. Currently, several towns in the Commonwealth, including Monson, Marshfield, and North Andover, have enacted similar, if not exact, copies of the proposed bylaw to proactively protect their residents' property rights. These bylaws were all reviewed and passed by the Attorney General of Massachusetts. If passed, this bylaw will go to the Attorney General's office for review or approval. That's the entirety of it, and with the moderator's consideration, I would like to make a motion. My motion is to move article to a committee as designated by the chair of the select board for review. The purpose of this motion is it will allow the select board to review this proposed bylaw, and it can be returned for approval or rejection at the next town meeting in the fall. Thank you. I have a second.
Okay, so this seems all in order. So the motion is to move this article to a committee as designated by the chair of the select board for review.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator here. That seems to be out of the scope of this article, due to the fact that it's, number one, a petition article, and it sets forth in here, and it does say or take any other action relative there, too. So, I mean, but if we're now turning around and moving this to another town meeting, we can't really push it to another town meeting. We'd have to go through the process. In the fall, it will be a special town meeting, if I remember correctly, and it takes a hundred signatures for a, an article to go before a town meeting.
Mr. Moderator?
Sure.
If I may, through you. I know, excuse me, I know the petitioner, the main petitioner could not be here tonight, but I also know that he spoke with an attorney, and that attorney specified there were several different things that could happen here. The article could fail, could pass, he could have a representative here to speak on it, and he could move it to a committee for further study. So I believe that's in order.
originally put forth to, to create a new bylaw, but the petitioner is sort of, you know, declining to do that, they're, they're laying that on the table indefinitely by saying that they'd rather just refer it to the Board of Selectmen, to have the Board of Selectmen create a committee. So I'd say everything's in order here, because we're not actually, you know, doing any specific work here besides referring it over to the Board of Selectmen, and then it would come up at a future town meeting for review, because the Board of Selectmen cannot create a bylaw without town meeting, so...
Mr. Moderator, but the first article that we actually voted on was reports and creating a new board committees or whatnot. Typically, the first article is that one, and I'm not sure if we actually had that this year, of creating a new committee, and isn't this creating a new committee?
So, as we understand, the request is not to create a new committee, but to refer to the Board of Selectmen who would create the committee, or the select board, sorry.
My final question, Mr. Moderator, is, Mr. Shea, were you one of the signers of this petition article? Is anybody here physically who signed that petition article?
Article, when it receives the requisite number of signatures, is required to go on the warrant in the exact form in which it's submitted. However, once the article is on the warrant, it is an article subject to motion like any other article in the warrant. Any person can make a motion, any person can make an amendment, and it is subject to vote, subject to the moderator's discretion as to whether or not the motion to amend is in order. The moderator has made that declaration, and therefore, this motion is properly before the meeting, in my opinion.
Mr. Jermaine?
So, are you saying that we either have to vote this in the affirmative or vote it down? There's no modification. We can't refer it to study or any of that stuff, so it's an up-down vote?
I think, I'm sorry, there you missed, Moderator. No, that's not correct. The, it's a warrant article like any other. And so, the motion that was made, however, was to refer it back to a committee. So, you can vote yes to refer it back to the committee, or you can vote it no to refer it back to the committee, and if you vote no, then the main article is back on the table for a motion.
It didn't come out of committee, is my question. So, I'll be referring it back to a committee.
Well, I mean, basically, what this is doing is, this has the effect of indefinitely postponing, okay? You're removing it-
On the table?
You're removing it from the table at this meeting, and you're asking the Board of Selectmen to further it, to study it further, and then decide whether they want to bring it back at a future meeting.
So, can we make a motion to table this?
The motion is to refer it to a committee. I think it has the same effect, in my opinion.
Mr. Moderator, I have one more question.
Mr. Belvin.
On a draft warrant that was submitted, Town Council actually made an opinion of this, and it was in the negative, and then that opinion was thus removed because it's not on the original here. I'd like to know because, I mean, that's one of my questions here. It was on a draft warrant that it was opposed, that it was illegal, and now, lo and behold, that opinion is no longer on here, and-
Mr. Belvin, you have to speak in specifics because the draft warrant is not in front of us here, so can you speak in terms of, and what bearing does the draft warrant have on the version that's in front of us here?
Mr. Moderator, I may be able to help. I believe what Mr. Belvin is referring to is that this article was submitted by the petitioner, and it was on a former draft of the warrant. It stayed on the final warrant as it has to. The petitioner, I believe, asked, he wasn't going to be here tonight, he was asking us through our office whether or not that could be postponed to a future town meeting. I did check with council, and council informed us that it did have to remain on this warrant. It couldn't be, a petitioner cannot have it removed, or ask the Selectmen to remove it and put it on a-
Right.
-future warrant. It had to appear on the warrant.
Okay, so that's the decision?
I think that's the, that's what I think you're referring to, Bob.
Okay, so, it's a, it's, you know, it's a specification of the fact that it has to be on the warrant, has to be put before a town meeting, but it does not mean that the motion can't be amended or changed.
Point of order.
Mr. Jermaine?
I think what Bob's referring to is the following note. Please be advised that it is Town Council's opinion that this article proposes an action.
We've got a point of order to a point of order. Say that again? You have to come to the microphone, please.
You're answering a question. You don't think it's pertinent? You think it's not pertinent to this?
So, you guys, you can't have conversations with each other. You have to speak through me. So, hold on one sec, before you make any comments. The question is unclear to me. So, there's some question about a draft version of the warrant, which is not what we have before us here today. So, unless there's some way of stating how that is germane to the conversation-
Mr. Moderator through you. So, as I often do when reviewing the warrant, I was asked to give an opinion as to the legal effect of the petitioned article, which I did. That legal opinion does not become part of the warrant. That's for the consideration of the Board of Selectmen and the town administrator. That being said, the motion before you is essentially to table this. And so, you know, it's not necessary to get into a debate regarding the legal effect of the petitioned article when the question in front of you is whether you wish to table this or, in effect, indefinitely postpone it for no action at this meeting.
Right, so is that satisfying, Mr. Shea? All right. So, do we have a copy of Mr. Shea's motion? Okay, so, on the motion made by Mr. Shea to move the article to a committee as designated by the Chair of the Select Board for Review, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Oh.
Motion passes by majority vote.
I make a motion we close our town meeting.
We have a motion to adjourn and second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, everyone. We really appreciate your time. Please be safe and healthy, and also, please leave in an orderly fashion and give everybody ample space. Thank you.